Rise for the flag, please.
This morning, we've seen an effort to bridge your purposes. We asked you, may we publish any vote on its entirety on the district's court side without the express permission of any other participants? With that, could I please get one more call? Mr. President, here. Mrs. Fisher.
Here.
Ms. Fitzgoe.
Here.
Mrs. Keough.
Here.
Mr. President, here. Mr. Metz.
Here.
Mrs. Ramasco.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Mr. Zatchin.
Here.
All are present. Mr. Tate, thank you. Could I please get the sun changed?
The board is four directors held an executive session on Wednesday, February fourteenth to discuss personnel matters, information, strategy, and negotiation of bargaining agreements. Matters subject to the current, current and type, attorney's and client privilege, confidentiality laws, salary schedule, and labor relations, and potential public safety issues. Thank you. Any correspondence on tonight's other amendments or amendments to the agenda? No? Okay, thank you. At this time, district residents may come forward to comment on agenda items only. Each person must state their first and last name and address prior to speaking. Each resident will be allowed three minutes and can speak only once. This period for public comment prior to the standing committee reports will be limited to one half hour. Although not required, board members deciding to address questions or concerns may do so after the residents' comments or questions or at the conclusion of the committee reports. There will be still, there will still be an opportunity for residents to comment on any business relevant to the Ambridge area school district, other old and new business at the end of the meeting. Does anybody have any public comment? Okay, with that, I believe we have a few presentations this evening. First presentation is the audit presentation by Mr. Peter, pardon my pronunciation, Ben Cherry.
That's it. You did. Did good.
Very good. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. Thanks for allowing me to come and speak to the board. As I said, my name is Peter Ben Cherry. I'm the audit partner from Hosack Spectacular Wood that performed your audit for the year ended six thirty twenty twenty-three. I did give you a copy of the audit report there, which is a ninety-page report. We're not going to bore you with all that. So I put a little summary together of just some of the highlights this morning to touch on to let you know where things were for the year and where the amounts came through. So as you can see in the report here, page number is referenced back to the actual audit report itself. Get forward one night when you go back to this whole thing. The first letter you see in there is our independent auditors' report. So it states that it's an unmodified opinion, but states that the financial statements are apparently presented in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. It states that you did the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and generally accepted government auditing standards due to the fact that they did it because they spent federal funds. First thing we want to take a look at is the balance sheet for the governmental funds. So you have two governmental funds, a general fund and a capital project fund. The fund balance in your general fund at the end of six thirty twenty-three, the total is ten million, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and nine.
Looking in three different categories, non-spendable, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, committed or assigned, six million and five, and unassigned, a four million and five. So the committed fund balance has been committed for future capital expenditures, one and a half million, future retirement, healthcare increases, and a million dollars for potential tax appeals going forward. So those things that, you know, they can change each year as you undesign or unassign, assign those funds. So your unassigned fund balance is three million and five. When you look at that as a percentage of your budgetary expenditures, you're at six point seven percent of that amount. So you're within the range of where, you know, where recommended balances should be for the year. And capital project funds, fund balance in there is a million and twelve thousand, two sixty-three. And we're looking at changes in that fund as opposed to on the other part, other side of the picture. So looking at your change in revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance through your general fund. You can see your total revenues, just over fifty-four million dollars, expenditures, forty-one million, eight fifty-six, and then other financing services, uses, resources, and financing that would have been placed, three hundred and three thousand dollars. So your change in your fund balance is a positive four point six million dollars for the year. Now, when you're going to be budgeting, if you budget, basically you're breaking, uh, funding the fund balance, meaning that your revenues, expenditures. Now, one thing to remember in that four million causes increase in fund balance, in there is about three, well, under three point two million of federal COVID funds. So ESSRs, our ESSR, ESSR two, and the other fund that we used to cover certain expenses that would have normally been incurred anyway. So, you know, it's a good thing that the fund balance did increase, but this has caused, and that those funds obviously are going to be expended. And I'm not sure, I'll come ahead, wouldn't have left with those funds, but I think a good portion, the majority of those have been spent since six thirty twenty-one, or six thirty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. ESSR fund will be funded to the district there. So part of the reason for the variance is, your revenues did come in over budget, a million and four sixty-seven, which is just below one of three percent. Expenditures did come in under budget also, three million and thirty-nine, they're gained is under six percent. So both positives, obviously added to where you wound up with a positive increase in fund balance. Then when we look at revenues, you can see how they're broken down between local, state, federal. So your local sources are just under over fifty percent of your total revenues are coming from local sources. State's providing just under forty-two percent of your total revenues. And then federal for this year, as you can see, the total of federal, which includes ESSRs, your ESSR, in title programs and any other federal programs, seven point two percent. So that's a fairly higher number than what you would normally see over the last number of years before the COVID funding came place. Expenditures broken into major categories, construction, just under sixty percent, support services, non-structural, minimum debt service. We're giving your principal and interest under debt, twelve percent of your total expenditures to cover the debt, debt costs. Like I said earlier, we do have capital projects fund. Your activity in that fund is interest income, sixty-three thousand for the year. There's no expenditures out of that fund in twenty-two, twenty-three. So the other fund you do have is the food service fund. Obviously, that's the fund that the operations of the food service and school lunch programs are in. If you're looking at that sheet, the number for six thirty twenty-two and that's parentheses around it, that's, I think it should not be, it's not a negative number for twenty-two. So for twenty-three, your revenues and savings are expenses by two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, compared to a prior year of three hundred and thirteen thousand. I think on that sheet you have, I think it shows a negative, but it's not. So you can see that fund is actually being supportive. The revenues are generally enough income to cover your current expenses out of there, at least the direct expenses. There's so many direct expenses that aren't always allocated to that fund, but for the most part, it's self-sufficient. The next section of the financial statements would be the footnotes. Footnotes are long, probably forty pages. There's a lot of information in there. It talks about the basics of accounting. It talks about capital assets. It talks about your debt. Just to point out a couple of things here that we've already talked about in the prior years, the net pension line voting with Peasers. That notes six pages long, just to show your, a lot of portion of the net pension line voting with Peasers at the end of the year, forty-five million, three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. And your shares, point one zero two percent. So it's a very small percentage of a very large number. But really, all you're doing is you're making your legal required contributions into the plan, under the, under the plan document, and making the required contributions. So your contributions in twenty-two, twenty-three, the Peasers were five point two million dollars. So there's schedules in the back that will show us the last ten years of information, and what your payments were to Peasers over the last ten years. And you can see, you know, in about ten years, there's going to be half of what we're paying now as that rate increased there. Two other liabilities, we have the post-employment benefits through the district. These are dividends are provided to retirees upon retirement, under the terms of the various contracts that you have. That's an actual liability of nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand. And then also with APs, there's post-employment benefits in that plan too, where retirees do receive funds after they retire towards their healthcare costs. And your share of that liability is a million, eight seventy-four. Then long-term debt, that we're going to hear about next, your outstanding balance is fifty-three million, two thirty-five. So the principal that you paid down during the year was four million, eighty-five thousand dollars. So that's your general liquidation balance of outstanding. You also have some financing agreements through the purchases of, I believe they were compers, where it was just a basically a note, it's called a financing agreement. Balance there is three hundred and sixty thousand. And then with lease liabilities, which was a new kicker that we implemented last year regarding operating leases, that liability there is a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. The last section of the report is the same audit session. Like I said earlier, since you've spent over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funds, we're required to audit and portion, uh, join a separate, uh, government standards and, I mean, uniform grant guidance act also. So your total federal expenditures in the year were six million, ninety-two thousand dollars. Some of those are in general fund, a good portion also is in the food service, responsible for school license, school practice programs too. Under COVID, total federal COVID expenditures in there, I consider it's two million, one hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, which obviously are not going to continue to occur, hopefully. The results from the audit are noted on page eighty-five. So what we require to test, we require to test major programs, including the older center of different types of dollars, we did test them, and it's considered low risk. The programs we selected this year were the education stabilization fund, which is based on the SOBs, and the child inclusion fund. We did test those, and part of the results there, we have the monetary weaknesses, internal control, over the financial reporting, the financial things for the federal programs. And in addition, we have higher funds under two major programs that we tested. Nothing important in terms of those from a compliance standpoint.
My contact information there, so anybody has a question, you can feel free to reach out to me. If you have a question on the audit report or anything here, I'd be more than glad to answer it. If there's any questions or any, any other comments? Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to work for the district and look forward to continuing that. So, thank you. Yeah. Thank you. It's nice to see everybody again. I feel bad that we have to do both of these in the same night, but they actually do go together. I can tell you this, from covering school districts throughout the state, this district is in a lot better shape than the majority of school districts in Pennsylvania. But unfortunately or fortunately, because of what you did with your COVID fund, where you were actually bringing them down to the bottom line, most school districts had to use those just to supplement the budget and were left with no fund balance. So there's a fiscal cliff hitting most school districts next year. From what you've just heard, you put yourself in a position where you're prepared and you didn't rely on those COVID monies to do ongoing expenses. You used them to supplement the budget and bring more money to the bottom line. So kudos to you, and we'll get into. How that's going to help you with what we're about to talk about tonight at the end. But it's all going to dovetail very well together. I think the last time I saw you was about a year ago, talking about interest rates and the hope that rates were going to come down. And as you know, in the last two and a half years, the Fed funds rate has gone up over five percent. Well, what that means for you, you're not borrowing short-term rates, but you are borrowing long-term rates. And all of a sudden, we didn't have any opportunity to monitor your debt in the lower interest rates in that two and a half-year period. But low and behold, in December, we started to get positive information from the Federal Reserve and from the place where the market was telling us that potentially sometime this year, we could be in a position where if rates were to trend lower, if the Fed were to decrease rates, you may have an opportunity to refund some of your debt, lower your interest costs, and drop some savings to the bottom line. And that's what we're going to talk about tonight. On the first page of the handout, you're going to see there's a lot of information on there, but the most important part of that, all that information, it has to do with where short-term, long-term rates are. That graph at the bottom is a twenty-year borrowing rate. Look at that graph. You can see in the far right-hand side, that's over the last month, that rates dropped dramatically in December. And things were looking great. In fact, with one CPI data point, rates dropped over a percent in December. And all of a sudden, every. By the funds rate, we may have an opportunity to do something. So what are we talking about? Well, first, the next page is just the summary of your debt for any new board members or ongoing board members. So you have this, you have four bond, five bond issues outstanding. This top part of the page walks you through the amount that was originally issued, how much is currently outstanding, the interest rates associated with each one of those issues, the final maturity. Most importantly to us are the interest rates and the call date. Unlike your mortgage, where you can refinance anytime, municipal bonds can be refunded at what's called the call date. You can see, for instance, the two thousand twenty-one Bs are callable in two thousand thirty. And then highlighted at the very bottom, the two thousand fourteen As, they can be called in and refinanced on eleven-one of two thousand twenty-four. So that's what we're really looking at is what can be called today. And also, just so you know, the two thousand seventeen Cs can be called today, the two thousand sixteen Bs can be called today. But we're not looking at those because when those bonds were issued relatively wise, rates were lower than they are today and lower than where we're expecting them to be in November. But what we can tell you is that under today's interest rates, without any change in the federal funds rate, there's actually savings to be achieved in that two thousand and fourteen issue. And if they decrease rates even further, the savings go higher because the lower the rates go, the more you're going to save. Just look at the very bottom, and when your auditor was talking about your debt payments, interestingly enough, this is your debt payments. They fit together like a puzzle. Some go up, some go down. What we can always expect is that you're level, you have a level annual payment moving forward or a decreasing payment. So your debt's leveled about five point one million a year until the year two thousand twenty-eight, or two thousand twenty-seven, where it drops down to four point six. And then two years later, it drops down to under four million. So I think when I first started working the district in two thousand four, when we built this high school, you know, you took on a lot of debt. And now you're in a position where you're finally seeing that debt being paid off. I think you're paying over four million in principal a year. So that's, that's a quickly amortizing debt portfolio. You're going to be in a position within the next ten years, they'll almost be debt-free. And anything we talk about, any refinancing, we don't change anything. Our job is just to lower the interest rate. We don't change the final maturity. You do, you do, you can do that. We've never chosen to do that. That would be your decision, but the district's always chosen just to lower its interest cost. Interesting enough, another good point for your auditor, your annual pension payment has now surpassed your debt payment, which is kind of quirky. It's the first time I've ever seen it where actually the pension payments have gone higher than the debt payments. So, okay, John, what are we really talking about? Final page is just a summary of replacing your two thousand fourteen. We're funding that out today. The current rate, average rate on that's about three point four seven. Again, that's an attractive rate. However, in today's market, without any Fed funding decrease, you're at about a three oh three. So there would be some savings if you could do it today, which you can't. And those savings would allow you to reduce your annual cost of that debt by roughly fifty thousand a year over the life of that issue. Or a total of about four hundred and sixty thousand in cash flow. This is highlighted in green at the bottom. And that cash flow savings over the life of the issue, four hundred and sixty thousand. What we did at that four hundred and sixty thousand, you'll see in something below there called net PB savings. If I save you fifty thousand a year, that's not really fifty thousand in today's dollars. So we take those cash flows and present value them to today's dollars. That's about four hundred thousand if we were to give that to you today. So that's the present value savings, and that's just over one and a half percent. So this is again, in today's market, with a twenty basis point decrease, we can expect that saving possibly could go up close to six hundred thousand. So our job is that if we think rates are going to get lower, to get everything ready, to get the rating put in place, get all documents done, get the resolution passed, and then set a threshold that if we can save a certain dollar amount, then we can move forward to refund it. So what we do know is that, okay, there hasn't been an interest rate decrease yet, and we're saving four hundred PB. So we want to set the threshold higher than what we have today. So typically, school districts in Pennsylvania use a two percent threshold. So if you were to save two percent of the outstanding bonds, that's roughly five hundred and twenty-five thousand. That's the minimum that we would recommend. You could always go higher. You could always roll the dice and hope that rates go down even more. Historically, that would mean that rates would be on this issue, they saved more than five hundred and twenty-five thousand. You'd have to have a rate under like two point seven five percent. So you start to get to the outliers of how low rates can go. That's why, based upon where this issue is, where current rates are, and historical averages, we think probably that five twenty-five. Hopefully, you know, an anomaly occurs when you save eight hundred thousand, but we think a good threshold would be five hundred and twenty-five thousand. If we do, if we do do that, what we would do is we would pass that resolution at a, I mean, meetings.
Whether that's in March or April.
We're out here with bond counselors, E F D Dicker from Vinsber Scholz, who's representing the districts. I thought this is as I have, so he would provide our documentation. We'd get everything teed up. And then come May, late May, we'd be in a position where we can actually lock in rates because you can actually do it in advance of that call date. And then we'd send the money and call the bonds in, in November. But in order to get there, we need a rating, we need documentation, and we need to be ready to go so that when rates do drop, we're able to get into that market very quickly. Because if you recall what I talked about in December, we hit towards a percent and a half drop. Rates move quickly in the short term. And then as they progress, and the markets start to figure things out, they sort of float up. So if it happens, we get our first decrease in May, we're ready to go, and we're one of the first in the marketplace. So our job is, we can't dictate where rates are going to be. All we can do for you is be prepared on your behalf. And that's why we're here talking about it today. So with that, are there any questions on where rates are, what we can expect, or how the transaction works? Should we gladly answer any specific questions?
Your plan then would be to come back in April and May, as you said, if we're in general agreement and set that minimum at five and a quarter? Is that what you said?
Yeah, I think, we could do it at the March meeting, but the April meeting's fine. It's up to, it's up to your agendas, whatever fits. It doesn't matter to us. They're well ahead of the curve.
So it's, we do. Once we get past that November date, is that the drop?
No, 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 you can wait, you can wait forever. You can wait forever. So yeah, the issue has ten years remaining. So I think if you had ten years remaining mortgage. So let's say rates didn't cooperate and we waited another five years. We could probably not expect to save five hundred thousand because now we only have five years left of principal. The issue's been paid off. Instead of twenty-six million, there's only ten million outstanding. So as you, as we get closer to the final maturity, we can expect savings to go down. In fact, you're paying three and a half percent now of the amount that you're paying, the majority of it's principal. So there's very low interest already being paid. But you can wait if rates.
Well, you wouldn't have to wait five years. I mean, and I'm.
You can buy it the next day. You could do it in November. You could do it January of next year. You can, it all depends on what you said. What makes you comfortable in terms of what rate you think is a good rate to save? Does that make sense?
It does.
You don't have, so if rates don't cooperate, or if you think you want to save seven hundred and fifty thousand in it, we come November and we're not at seven hundred and fifty thousand. We just keep sitting and waiting and waiting and potentially hoping that rates go to a point where we can save seven hundred and fifty thousand. But yeah, the, the call date's just the first day you can act. Doesn't mean you have to act that day.
How long does it take to pull the information together to be prepared to move forward?
So we can have all documents together, once we get the information from your administration, in about a week and a half. The problem is when we send that to the rating agencies. Right now, they're not as busy as we expect them to be. So if you can get into their queue early, you might get a turnaround of two and a half weeks. But if the first rate decrease comes, let's say, in April, and everyone has transactions like yours, want to have them rated, it can go to four and a half to six and a half weeks. So our job is what we're doing with our clients. If we think we have a transaction, we're going to get it to rating agencies, get it rated, and then sit on it. And hopefully, rates come down, we can be projecting, and you're one of the first ones to enter the market.
So what's, what's the difference between us getting a rating within the next month and us waiting six months to get the same rating? Or is it just the amount of time that the rating agency would take?
So just how quickly, where rates are and how quickly you want to act. So let's say that, let's say we don't do anything now.
Follow-up question before we move forward. How long are we able to sit on a rate if we're prepared to move forward with the refinance? So we, let's say we do it in the next month, and the rating agency's there, and someone offers us two and a half percent. We can't act on it until November, regardless of what we do.
No. So, okay, so the actual timeframe is you can close a transaction ninety days in advance of eleven-one. So that's August first. You're able to price a transaction with no penalty. You could actually get someone to give you a rate today, afford rate, but it would be higher than the current market. But let's just, a current market rate, you can do that forty, forty-five days in advance of August one. So you're talking about mid-June, you can actually lock in the rate if you're happy where rates are.
And you're locked.
Locked in, yeah, right. So that day, the day that you actually priced the issue, where you actually are selling the bonds, all, everything's locked in that day. And that's the day that we come with a bond purchase agreement. That agreement tells you, if we can't save what we said in the resolution, whatever you adopt in April or March or May, if you can't save that much, you can't sign the contract. So that's sort of your protection that whatever you do, whenever you do it, nothing can be acted upon until that contract is signed. And, and you can save that, that threshold. Did I answer the first question now?
I, I feel you've answered it for me.
Okay. Now, we wouldn't, because, so let's go back to, the timeframe is around June, mid-June, we're going to lock in that rate if rates are in a place to lock them in. So we would send a package to the rating agencies mid-April, potentially. If rates are in a position where there's floating up higher, or something happens, or there's a war, something's causing rates to go up, and then a war's going to cause rates to go down. We wouldn't send that package in unless we feel fairly confident that rates are going to be in a position where we're funded. Because there is a cost that has to be paid at some point to the rating, and that's the only cost you, that you'll take on, is the rating cost. Once you get that rating, because they're rating something, you have to pay that.
What's the average on that?
The average cost on that. So if the transaction's twenty-five million, it's going to be probably twenty thousand. Now, if you don't do, if you don't do the transaction, they don't charge you twenty thousand. They charge you six percent of that. And then they give you credit whenever you do do the transaction. So you'd have to pay it, but then when you eventually do do the transaction, you get the correct package. But yes, that is a cost that has to be paid. So we're cognizant of not going that next step until we're sure we're in a position. But what we're talking about at the meeting, we're going to pass a resolution, no cost, don't do anything, get documents ready, and get it ready to send to the rating agencies, assuming that everything looks like it's heading in the right direction. In that same rating, two thousand twenty-two, the district, they came in, and every so often, they'll, they'll revise your rating. You were A minus on negative watch in two thousand twenty-five. Because of your financials, they dropped the negative watch and just A minus. The district has improved tremendously since then. So the next point is that we want to make sure that we shine you up as much as possible because. because there's a potential here, we get to the A category. In every category you go up, the lower the interest rate, or the lower your cost associated with the transaction. So there's a lot of moving parts here, but that rating part is probably the most important, especially because you haven't done so well in maintaining a fund balance, in passing fixed budgets, and not using pandemic money. I mean, I think we've got a good story here to tell. We don't want to get lost in the shuffle.
Any other questions?
No, I would just say, do we, do we want to work on getting the documents? Do you want to let us know next week? That would be fine, whatever, whatever you want to do.
So you're, it would be better the earlier that we do this, so that all of this can line up in time to lock a rate in.
We're here very early. We have plenty of time, right? We know we can't lock in rates till mid-June.
Right.
We want, I think the latest, we want to pass that resolution is mid-April. March is a great meeting to find, right? It's just done, check the logs, and we start working on docs. We don't really, we're not sending anything to a rating agencies before April anyway. So the April meeting sort of, I mean, I, I think we want to act by then, if we want to be in the cat first position, to be ready in June. But we can do the March as well, so.
Does April put us behind? I think you said something about other school districts, or others would have to-
No, we're gonna, we're still gonna, we're still going to gather the information from your administration and be ready to go. So April's fine. So we're gonna, we're just going to do everything without the resolution passed.
So we want to get in with the rating agencies before it gets to the busy time.
That was my thought.
Yeah, right.
So obviously, your company speculates on these kinds of things. You do not.
No, we don't speculate. Our job for our clients is to prepare you to take advantage of the market and set realistic targets.
So you don't have speculation on what you believe is going to be the trend throughout the course of the year?
I'm sure, just like most economists, everyone's always wrong.
Yeah.
No, we're, no. Speculation's the wrong word. All we can do is provide information and give you our thoughts on the information we see from the marketplace, and pass it along to you and say, okay, this is what everyone would do, or this is what we would recommend. But I don't think speculation is-
So, so if we, if we committed to this, and it doesn't turn out to work in our favor, what costs are involved?
So just that rating cost, so.
60% of the average.
60% of whatever, whatever that cost is, and-
That's it.
We'll have that, we can get the front number by April, whatever that, but again, that's a cost you pay. You're going to do, the great, or the bad or good news is you'll always have a refunding to do, and you always get to use that credit at one point. So it's never lost money, it's just prepaid money. Does that make sense?
Any other questions?
Are we okay with revisiting next week? Or are you going to just tell them come in April? Is that what you want, or March? I don't-
I would prefer to be ahead of seeing one.
I, I think so, too. I think that's something-
Re-meet in March?
So you'll have it prepared for March, right?
So just, and it's not, in March will be the legal ad, it will be the resolution that's drafted by bond counsel. I'm telling this now, because I know at your March meeting, I'm out of town. So I can't be at that meeting. But the, the only action you think of that meeting is you're going to say, if and when we can save X dollars, we can enter into refunding, and nothing else is going to change. We'll provide a market update prior to that meeting, but I already know I cannot be at that meeting.
What about the other March date?
Is it March 13? You know what, that's actually, I can come, you don't have to take action, but I can come update you at the March meeting, and then bond counsel can come with the resolution.
Well, we voted, though.
At the voting meeting.
So you can't be here on the 13th, you said?
I can be here, I think you can be here on the 13th. I can't be here on the 20th.
So you want to do it on March 13th?
Is that okay?
I'm good with that.
No, wait, hold on. No, I'm leaving that.
Wait until after Valentine's Day to cancel your family's vacation.
I'm going to see my daughter out of town. The flight's 11 o'clock at night. I think I can pull that off.
I wouldn't.
My wife's going to-
I was just going to say, depends on what your wife, how he-
So that's the problem. Go on, the 13th through the 20th, which are the two meeting dates.
But at that point, we'll have direction, we'll know where we are.
And we're not, really, we're not doing anything.
You're not really an integral piece of that.
Not, no. It's all legalese. All you're doing is, you're teaming the ball up. We're not, we're not going to hit the ball. Prior to hitting the ball, let's say, April or May, probably the May meeting, I'll come back and say, hey, things are looking great. That just kind of interests rates in the short term for the first time. Long-term rates are dropped to X. The current saving levels are Y. I think we're going to act in mid-June. That's the more important information, if I were you, that I think I need to hear. The, the resolution is just all legalese, and it's going to do everything we said we were going to do. The only thing that we haven't talked about is that there'll be an ad in the paper that says you're going to issue debt and refund it prior to that resolution being passed in March. But it hasn't been an ad.
But you will set, you will help us, even though you're not here, set what you believe the appropriate limit would be.
Yes.
I mean, because obviously, this is how I see it. We're going to see, as you can see on that sheet, 40-some thousand dollars if things work out a year for those years. So we want to try to get as much of that as we can, right? And you want to set a minimum, but you don't want to set one so high on the other side that you miss out saving 40 or 50,000 a year, because you set it too high. So generally speaking, what we would be looking for, for going through all this, I understand you're saying we could kind of put that, that payment that we paid to see the savings on a shelf till the next time we do it. That sounds good, but you also said, as I heard it, right, as you have before, that the farther you go down the road, the less savings you're going to have, because the less interest you're paying, correct? So I think what we need, some guidance is just, we've heard it, we get, we get it, just making sure you work with us to make sure when we put that agenda item together in March, that we come up with a, you know, a minimum savings amount that makes sense, so that we don't overshoot it to the point where we don't save then. Because then, to me, that seems like we missed an opportunity to save, in my opinion. So, I mean, it's always like, you, you want to know what that number's going to be the next day, oh, man, or you could be like, oh, yeah. I mean, I get all that, like you were saying, but at the end of the day, what I don't want to see is us have the opportunity to have that type of savings, even though we all want more, and miss that. So I think what we would need from you is, is the legal advertisement, which I know you help us provide, is that we go out, our solicitor can review that, and your recommendation on that not to exceed, which may still be 525, or whatever you say, minimum, or it might be a little less, or what have you. You're still going to try to get us the max that you can, but we don't want to miss out on it. That's my recommendation to the board.
And we'll meet with you before that March 20th or 13th meeting. Before I leave, we'll have a meeting with the three of us.
Right.
Get over the market, so that you can convey to the board where we are.
Does that seem like a fair plan to the board?
Yes.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Great, thanks, it's nice seeing everybody, and then-
One more.
Yep.
And, and doing the call on the refinancing of the bond, expectation is the maturity date will maintain at 2032, which is what you have on the paper. But the future call date, what would that, how would that change?
That is a great question. So we always work on your behalf to have the shortest call date possible. When the issue is 10 million and under, you can always get a five-year call. When it's over 10 million, the majority of the market wants a 10-year call. We've been very successful on the last couple of years, getting some kind of seven- and eight-year call. Looking at that issue, though, I think this one goes up in 2032. So 2032, and it's 2024, you know, you're like, you're like-
Right, about eight years already.
So it would be different in the market. So you're selling, you're selling bonds into the market that everyone, every other investor is paying to sell bonds into. And that's your, you're competing with every other issue that's doing a longer call date. If you're an investor, you want to buy Ambridge with a six-year call, or you want to buy Mount Lebanon with a 10-year call, where you're protected. Of course, you're going to choose the 10-year call. So you're sort of, you're, you're fighting a battle of, how short can I do the call, but not pay that much more in interest? Because the shorter you try to do a call, someone's going to say, I want a little higher interest rate, maybe it's 1, 100%, maybe it's 5, 100%. But I can tell you this, I want to see the shortest call possible. I'm in the business of refunding bond issues, so we're always struggling with, how short can we go without paying a penalty in the marketplace? Great question. Thank you. So hopefully, we see you in April, May, with some very good news on where the market's going.
I'm looking to hear from you to set up a meeting to, to get the legal ad and set the motion for the March agenda.
Perfect.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Dr. Phil, possibly, do you have a clicker, or do we just?
Thank you. So I'm up next. A little bit about the district data, I want to share some, some strengths that we found this year. First and foremost, before I get into it, would like to thank, you know, in particular, the students and their parents, along with the staff, for all of their hard work, because really, that's what it comes down to, you know, trying to put your best effort in, trying to show growth. Obviously, you had those transition years, as, as you hear about with COVID and those types of things. So it was difficult for a little while, and I think this, this year showed some gains. Always looking for more, but showed some gains. So remember, we're talking about data from last year. Seems like a long time ago, but this is when it becomes finalized. So the Ambridge area high school, this is, you can almost see that. Basically, what I want to call your attention to, okay, is the ELA went up by 8.7% from the year before. Math was a huge decrease, and science was going to be a huge increase. The reason why that is, and I just want to be, to make a note of it down at the bottom there, the math and science scores aren't really a true representation. I wanted to show them to be transparent and honest, but we had a lot of COVID exemptions. So you're going to see a big swing with, with math going maybe down from where it was, and a big swing with science going up. But the reality of that, there was a lot of opt-outs with COVID. And so some students didn't have to take the test, which caused them into pretending on your year when they were banked to have a skewed number. But I wanted to share them. So you're going to see a huge increase in science and a huge decrease in math. But again, I think in general, we need to just keep working in those areas, in particular in mathematics at the high school, with some of our subgroup populations that we were looking at. We've been identified as an ATS high school, and we've done a lot of work on trying to improve that, and we need to continue to do so. So ELA is probably a true reflection of where we are, up 8.7. The other two would be skewed either way.
Just, just a quick question, so we understand the scope of that. When you say exemptions, are we talking about hundreds of kids being exempted?
So, yeah, there was, so you, you think of two, good question. So first of all, we think about exemptions because they are available to parents. That's not really completely what I'm talking about. There was large pieces of student bodies in the year of COVID, that if they completed that course, and they were supposed to take that course that year, did not have to take it. And that goes both ways, depending on the year. So again, the swing of a minus 57 means that the year before, the kids that took it was a smaller population, and they almost all passed. Vice versa, if you looked at the year before, those kids may, maybe have not passed. Now it went up 30%. Most of that isn't a true representation of an entire, you know, 11th grade group, if that makes sense. Because yet portions of the 11th grade taking this at this year, and this 11th grade this year, some got opted out of different things. So just to be fair and to be honest, I think it's important to understand that we can look at those and say that that's what happened, but the reality is, that was outside of everyone's control, and not everybody took the, the test. Now, in ELA, pretty much, we, we did see an increase from the year before. Most of those students did take that at the end of their 10th grade year, and were passed to COVID opt-out.
Can I piggyback off of that and ask a question?
Yeah.
So then math, this is going to take me a second to count years back. So the math would have been, we would have had eighth graders taking algebra at Keystone, possibly, like, not a lot, but a, you know, a portion of them. That would have been the year of 2021. So you're saying the 11th grader, the current, not current, last year's 11th graders are what's in these numbers?
That's right.
So then, they would have, those eighth graders that have taken it, they were all opted out, really, at that point, right? So that's why there's such a, a decrease, at least that's part of it.
That's part of it.
And then the ninth graders, the following year, would have taken algebra. Half of those probably, I'm just-
This is my point, it's big numbers to make it.
Because those were the two COVID years. One, one everyone, one-
So I think, I'm not, I, I didn't want to not show it, because I felt like if you didn't show it, and you just wrote that, then it would be looking like we're not trying to address the issue. My, my opinion is, there's still room for growth on, on both of those areas, and we understand that, but I don't think it's a fair representation to judge somebody with the, just like it wouldn't have been last year, if we would have put on there, there, there was a group that got 100% or 0%. I mean, it's, it's not accurate data of the entire body.
Can I ask one more question?
You should, yeah.
So then, what year do you predict these to be more accurate again? Like, when will all of those COVID, I mean, obviously, you know-
I'm not prepared to answer that in front of everybody, but I think pretty soon, we should have gotten most folks through, that would have opted out.
For COVID reasons.
For the COVID.
Right.
But I would, I could get back to you on that. We could make a note of that, and I could get back to you exactly. I don't want to misspeak, because, especially, remember in mathematics, it depends when you take that at the end of the course, and then they bank it. So a kid could take Algebra 1 course in 7th grade, 8th grade, 9th grade, 10th grade. Algebra 1 AB. So you have a lot, whereas ELA, it pretty much comes down to, you're taking it at the end of your 10th grade class. So biology is somewhat similar, too. There are a lot of students that take it in 9th grade, but there are some students that might not take it till 10th grade. Whereas pretty much, I won't say all, but almost all, ELA, 10th grade, that's it. That's what you take. Makes sense?
Thank you.
Okay, so, that's on there. But I am acknowledging, and I think we all are, that we know that especially in some groups of mathematics, we're hoping to try to, in particular, show some growth. It also says a key area of success is academic growth in ELA is 70%, which met the state growth standard of 70%. That was the expectation, and we met that state standard. That's looking at growth, not proficiency, so we didn't meet that. That's a strength.
Those numbers up top are-
Those are advancement, correct. Advancement, proficiency. I feel like, I wish this would just move over a little bit, but I think we can see. So here's Ambridge Middle School. We did see a slight decrease, unfortunately, in ELA, minus 6.4. Talking with some of our data team folks, we felt like, I think some of that came down to the transition of kids coming up from the elementary to the middle, and maybe missing some of those skill gaps on there. But I don't think that's a significant decrease. It's not, we don't want any, but we're really focusing on that. We're also looking at making sure that we talk a lot about vocabulary, and also a lot about test strategies, and really trying to, you're looking at author's purpose or main idea. and also a lot about test strategies and really trying to, you're looking at author's purpose or main idea. I feel like I'm turning my back real fast. Hold that, try this one. Author's purpose, main idea, a lot of good discussions in data team meetings and talking about, you know, how do we find text evidence within a community support? Also, how are we gonna read the directions with our students to make sure they understand the actual functions of what they're being asked? So I think that all those things kind of tie in. So it is a little decrease, not excited about that, but I think that will level out. Math, we did see an increase of plus 6.1% and our science went up 12.7%. So definitely movement. Academic growth in science is 73%, which met that state standard. And also, just as a side note, 98.1 of the students met the career benchmarks, which is a state performance of 98%. So those are the things where we're looking at career indicators and making sure the kids participate in that event to figure out what next steps are in putting those career benchmarks on. They monitor that to make sure these kids complete that. Which can be a challenge sometimes, believe it or not. Because, you know, some students, you know, because of absenteeism or this or that, you have to make sure you track it down and get them to complete it. That's the middle school. Questions on that?
Yes.
All right.
Sorry. So for ELA, those things that you were mentioning, author's purpose and idea, are those consistent like in each grade level and elementary leading up to the middle school? So that they're seeing that same thing over and over and over again?
Yes.
On their own grade level?
And I think vocabulary is the other component that we've seen some things in the common assessment increase. But, and some of it honestly just comes down to the multi-step questions. They get the first part of the question right, but then when it comes to what best supports that main idea, sometimes folks struggle with that. And a lot of that, we've been seeing in talking in our data teams, really come down to, you know, taking your time motivating and figuring out what is the best choice. Because believe it or not, some of these assessments, as we were talking about in different places, you know, are actually grade level assessments that are looking to see. You're not taking this test, you're taking this test at grade level. You're not taking this test on your grade level. So therefore, sometimes these are very challenging when you're scaffolding and trying to move people up. And then they get faced with this very difficult assessment. And there might be an answer, two answers that are very close. And if you don't read them all the way through and really decipher which one's right, a lot of times even on our common assessments, we're seeing things where they get the first part right, that kind of gives an answer, where the second part of that question might say, you know, why? Why do you believe this? And there's a couple of choices in there that are, if you just read the first one, you can clearly check A. And what we were talking about even today in our data team meetings, this was at elementary, not the middle school, but it's applicable to all, is, you know, sometimes you'll look at a common assessment question and it'll be 40% of the kids got this question right, 40% of the kids got, answered this question B. And then you have maybe some others that answered the other choice. Well, the other 40%, sometimes it's just a little bit of reading that direction one more time. They didn't read the direction to understand maybe that it was talking about a synonym versus an antonym using a very generic example. Or they picked the first answer that would support what they were saying, but it wasn't the best answer. So how do we go through that, right? And build a little bit of that grit and working through it? And it's difficult for the kids too, because they're challenging tests. And often they're cold reads, cold read, meaning they've never read this before, they've never heard of this before. It may be of interest to some students, but it may not be of interest to a lot of students, right? So you're trying to figure out, they're trying to give you something that you may have never heard of before. And also, it may or may not be of interest to certain students or majority of students. So trying to get them to read and reread and pick the best answer. So that's kind of what I was saying there. Did you have more on that one?
No, thank you.
Okay. Economy Elementary, yeah, 0.7 increase in ELA, but their scores were really pretty good to begin with. Math went up 4.3. And although science went down 2.4, I mean, they have an 83.8% proficiency, so. To be honest with you, from where I sit, you never want things to go down, but that is a really good score. 83.8, so I think, you know, that could be a question here and there on something. I'm not too alarmed by that. And I'm glad to see that we continue to increase in math and that we increased in ELA as well. So you can see on there some of the key successes, that the ELA at 75.6, which is higher than the state average by a lot. Proficiency in math, which is way higher than the average. Proficiency in science, which is way higher than the average. And also 100% of the students met those benchmarks. Questions on that? Highland Elementary. Very excited, a lot of work here, great data team, great leaders, worked hard on this. Very proud of them as well. We look at a 9.7 increase in ELA. We're talking about 11% increase in mathematics and a 4.6 increase in science. So we had increases across the board, a lot of work being put forth. Now, our growth scores may have gone down a little bit as compared to the 100% growth scores where they were before, to be transparent. But, you know, every time you get kids that get a certain score that's on proficiency, they might get proficient again, which is good for us, but it might be one question or so lower, which might have tweaked this down a little bit. I still think that we want to focus on growth and we need more students to show growth. But if you look at it, ELA growth was 70%, which met the state standard that they were looking for, which I think was good. The math growth was still 82%, which is higher than the state average of 74.9. So we may not have got that 100% growth as the other year, but it's still higher than the state and our scores went up. 100% of the students then met the benchmarks, the career benchmarks that we're working on for them as well. Just to highlight that. Question?
I do.
Sure.
At the top, we're identifying Keystone scores for Highland Elementary.
Should be PSSAs.
Okay.
Grade catch.
I want to make sure. And then when we spoke on Economy, you identified academic proficiency in math at 65.2% and proficiency in ELA at 75.6 and proficiency in science. But with Highland, we're identifying growth.
So.
Are we looking at?
Several things, the top, good question. First of all, I apologize for the typos, it's on the next slide. That's my fault. So I apologize ahead of time. That should be PSSA scores, we missed that one.
Yep.
That being said, these on the top, right here, are all advanced and proficient scores. Those are proficiency scores. These down here, look at your growth measures that you have. Some may list whatever your strength was. They are not consistent because we picked the strengths from the building.
Okay, and that's what I, just making sure we're looking.
The idea of this is trying to celebrate our successes. And for some people.
Absolutely.
It's growth and for other people, it's the fact that they scored where they did. But the top run, just to be clear, is advanced and proficiency.
Okay.
For PSSAs.
Thank you.
Yeah, good question. Any other questions on that? State Street Elementary. Again, I should say PSSA scores, I apologize for that. We got a 7.1% increase in ELA. We got a 4.4% increase in math and we got a 24.4% increase in science. All went up. Academic proficiency is 75.6, which is higher than the state average. So this is talking about actual proficiency. But it's also talking about ELA next. ELA growth is 75%, which is higher than the state goal of 70%. Math growth is 86% and the state average was 74.9, which is higher and higher than the goal of 70. And 100% of the kids met the benchmark. So we tried to mix in all the key areas of success for each building while showing you the proficiency in advanced went up. So State Street went up across the board. Excellent job as well.
I'm sorry, what is statewide 2033?
Statewide 2033, 100% of the students met the career benchmark. That means the goal is for, I believe in 2033, that 100% of the students are supposed to meet the career benchmarks by that point.
Okay.
They kind of set these rules, we sometimes refocus and rechange, excuse me, refocus and change. They sound different. That is the goal of getting people to be 100% on their career benchmarks. State Street with 98.
By 2033?
Yeah.
That's what I wasn't sure with that.
But I just caution on that because a lot of times, they write that and then by the time 2031 comes.
You've got nine years to get there.
Yeah, right, so.
Can I ask a question on the elementary?
Yeah.
Did they all, and it's okay if you don't know this off the top of your head, but did they all meet the statewide growth goal of 70% in all the areas?
I would say no. I don't know for sure. I'd have to look. If they weren't highlighted on there 100%, they may not have noticed that.
Okay.
Or we would have probably been listening.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? I'm really proud of the work. We're gonna go on here to next steps, but I'm really proud of the work. There are a couple of pockets we want to continue to grow. Elementary's, you know, really went up at large. And there were pockets of, you know, the middle school that definitely went up. Some areas that are, I could see why maybe they, where they went down a couple of points. And obviously, we should get much more clear data with the high school next year. Next steps, some of these are somewhat similar to what we talked about last year, but we're gonna continue to do walkthroughs to focus on skill gaps identified in the meetings. So we meet usually about once a month or so, maybe a little bit longer than that with each data team meeting. And what we do is we bring the staff in. Usually it consists of all the content teachers of the tested subjects, the building principal, special education teachers, focus teachers if you have them, tutorial teachers. And we work and look at the, we look comprehensively, what is going really well? What is the data indicating? What strategies are you using? We usually pull this data from the common assessments. And then we also look at the PSSA and Keystone data, at least originally, see if we see a correlation. I think one thing that I'm really pleased about, although we're making some tweaks on those, is that we are seeing a pretty strong correlation between the common assessments and the Keystone's and the PSSAs, which I think is big. That means they are at the same level of rigor, they're giving us a good clear picture. And I think it's preparing them on a much smaller scale, but it's preparing the students of what they're going to be faced with when they face the Keystone or the PSSA. We're using that data then in our own classrooms and other areas for interventions to both push the kids at each one of their levels, differentiate the instructions to do that. I think that's important. So we're gonna continue to do that and do walkthrough observations by our principals who will go into those classrooms. The other thing we started doing now is we brought all the principals together. Because what I started to hear from going to all the data team meetings was, believe it or not, there are some strategies or there are some issues that are across elementars or even vertically this way. And so I think by principals going into the classrooms and then sharing out amongst other principals, we only have so much time in the day, sharing that out allows some people to hear some strategies that might be working to motivate students or to address this issue in one building or in one grade level that could be applicable to another. Also trying to see those horizontal or vertical deficiencies and see if we have a similar problem and maybe look at supplemental resources that could be there. So we've had a lot of deep conversation with that. We started to take some notes about that. We started to share that out as an administrative team. And my hope is, is that a strategy that's shared by Principal A might be able to help Principal B with teacher XYZ. So I think that's big. Using flexible grouping and differentiated instruction is very important. We do that in the focus periods where we can and tutorial periods and within their own classroom. I think that's important. We talk a lot about co-teaching and really saying, if we're going to have these students have to take this test on grade level, we should scaffold, we should differentiate, but at the end of the day, they're gonna take a grade level test. So simply benchmarking them and then putting them in a benchmark that is well lower than the grade level, eventually you have to prepare them. Whether we agree with that or not, they're gonna be faced with that. So a lot of it is scaffolding and building that grit up and I think it's working, it's helping. We've also, it may not seem related, but I believe it is. We held a lot of trauma training, both to start at the beginning of the year and throughout the year. We have Aaron Traub, who was a presenter on opening day meeting with faculty every quarter in their given building to share some strategies. Because what we've learned and what we know, trauma comes in all forms and sizes and when it happens, it takes a lot away from your ability to be able to focus on the task at hand. And so the more ways we're able to help these students both personally, it will have, I believe, some impact on their academics and achievement. So between all the grants that we were able to get, I think our mental health capacity, Dr. Phil Pass, he could speak to it even more. But we have more and more resources that we're trying to make available. We're also trying to train and give strategies to our teachers and staff and making sure that we're positive of that and that we're working together to help these kids so that they can reach their full potential. And then providing structured literacy, that's a mandate by the state. But anyone who has reading or English certificates are gonna go through this structured literacy because what, this is something that we did find in all of our data team meetings. Often, in addition to trying to understand the strategy, students are struggling in some cases simply with, I can complete the task at hand or use the function of the problem. But it's reading through some very difficult things that are preventing me from being able to know which function I should use. So I think the state's looking at structured literacy as a whole. I think it's a very powerful component. I hope they, you know, our teachers have started this. And we're actually trying to offer that to all of our teachers, although not mandated. Because I think even if you learn this as a social studies teacher, I think it can be beneficial. When you're reading nonfiction texts, it could help them. And even if they only gain some of it, not to the level of a reading specialist or the kindergarten teacher or the English teacher, I still think it can help. Our Horton Gillingham training specifically focusing on reading, we've had some teachers participate in that. It's a very intense, demanding training, so we can't say we can get everybody there. But it is our plan to try to use some grant funds to get some additional teachers in that training and that should help and benefit them. Questions on this?
I have one. If we reopen the libraries and allow the children access to those resources and those books, would that assist with their learning, their literacy and our test scores?
You know, I don't think it's a terrible idea. I'll say it like that.
Yeah.
You know, we have STEAM and STEM, you're talking about contracts. The only thing I'll say there is, you know, the fifth planning periods are in there now. They're not completely, so here's what I'll tell you. There's only so much time in the day.
Right.
Fair? We do STEAM and STEM. I'm not opposed to hearing and talking through some of the questions that you're having. But remember, if we go to that special guaranteed for every fifth, you may not be, it may cut into your math, it may cut into your reading time that you have in the class. It may be worth it. Do I think that it could benefit and it could have a tie to test scores? It may. I mean, I think whether you do it or not, if the question becomes in a prioritized list, is that where we think that the dollar should be spent? And if it is, I definitely think it could have some benefits. I wouldn't say that it would solely increase the test scores itself. But I do think, I don't think it would hurt. Good question.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
How many teachers are in the process of getting to Horton Gillingham?
We put a posting out, how many about applied? We only have funding for a certain amount through the grant.
First.
Take a load of them.
Be the first round of the first round. We had four teachers, so they left to do it. This time, we just posted again, so we've had a bigger turnout based on the feedback from the first round.
But how many do we, we have about, was it eight? Yeah, we'll be able to get eight additional ones.
Okay.
If they elect to do it.
Is there one at every school? I know it's elective, so. There is. There's one at every. At least one. Awesome, okay. Thank you. At the elementary level, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Good question. Other question? Did you have? I'm sorry. Anyone else? Thank you for, I know that was a lot of presentations. Thank you for hearing that. And again, I'd just like to reiterate, you know, students, parents, everyone working together to close that gap. I know it's been a challenge and our teachers in particular have really worked really hard with our students to try to close that gap and help these kids to reach their full potential. So I think it's a group effort. I'm very proud of what everyone's doing and hopefully we can continue to show some. Thank you for.
Thank you. Thank you.
So that wraps up the presentations. Thanks to everybody who presented. Thank you, Dr. Pascharella. Legislative action for this evening. Personnel and salary schedule and labor relations. I believe we can find this one for the intents and purposes of tonight. Ms. Younger, Mr. Kuk, ladies and big.
We decided to split it. Ms. Young's gonna go first.
So I'm gonna do one through eight. So one is recommended to approve the resignation of Melissa Ryan, a paraprofessional at Highland Elementary School effective January 29th, 2024. Number two, it is recommended to approve the resignation of Tamika Tarver, a paraprofessional at Ambridge Area Middle School effective January 30th, 2024. Number three, it is recommended to approve the resignation for retirement of Diane Harris, a union kitchen worker at Economy Elementary School effective March 1st, 2024. Number four, it is recommended to approve the resignation of Derek Redd, a custodian at Ambridge Area High School effective February 16th, 2024. Number five, it is recommended to approve employee 2276, taking a leave of absence under Board Policy 435. Family and medical leave effective January 22nd, 2024, not to exceed 60 days. Number six, it is recommended to approve employee number 821, taking a leave of absence under Board Policy 435. Family and medical leave effective January 31st, 2024, not to exceed 60 days. Number seven, unpaid leave. It is recommended to approve employee number 582 for a one-time unpaid leave from February 6th, 2024 through March 1st, 2024. And number eight, it is recommended to ratify Elizabeth Vincent as a four-hour union kitchen worker at Highland Elementary School as per the terms of the collective bargaining union effective 9/26/2023.
To continue cafeteria food service worker, it is recommended to ratify Stella Condon as a four-hour union kitchen worker at Economy Elementary School as per the terms of the collective bargaining agreement effective 10/5/2023. Professional employee, it is recommended to ratify Amanda Pfeifer as a state street elementary kindergarten teacher at the salary of $47,871. Bachelor Step 1, prorated effective February 7th, 2024, as per. as per the terms of the Ambridge Area Education Association, AAEA, PSEA agreement, pending receipt of current clearances satisfactory drug screening, TV testing, and responses by current former employers to Act 168 screening and PDE certifications if applicable. Technology integrators, it is recommended to approve the following individuals to serve as technology integrators at the Ambridge Area Middle School for the remainder of the 2023-2024 school year, to be paid at a prorated stipend based upon the amount of $1,200 as per the Collective Bargaining Agreement. Lauren Mawini and Kristin Novak. Number 12, ABC Transit bus driver and aides. It is recommended to approve the individuals listed as operators attendance and maintenance for ABC Transit Incorporated for the 2023-2024 school year, pending receipt of current clearances satisfactory drug screening, TV testing, and responses by current former employers to Act 168 screening. Bus driver, bus aide Sabrina White. Bus driver Everett Baze Sevilla. Bus driver Randolph Campbell. Bus driver Dominic Marchionda. Bus aide Mary Clutter. Bus aide Brittany Tucker. Man driver Claire Seeger. Number 13, after-school detention. It is recommended to ratify the following teachers to supervise the after-school detention at the Ambridge Area High School. Teachers will be paid per the Collective Bargaining Agreement. Anna Ruben. I'm not done, don't worry. Steven Rogers and Nicole Conley. Number 14, 2023-2024 spring coaches. It is recommended the following individual will be ratified to fill the designated spring coaching position for the 2023-2024 school year at a salary as per the terms of the Collective Bargaining Agreement, pending receipt of clearances satisfactory drug screening, TV testing, responses by current former employers to Act 168 screening, provided the school year allows coaches to hold spring sports as normal. Baseball, James Dean Varsity Baseball Volunteer Coach, no renumeration. Noah Ranker, Junior Varsity Baseball Coach, $2,200. Number 15, posted positions, clubs, and activities. It is recommended to rescind Carlin Humphries as sole sponsor of the National Honor Society for the 2023-2024 school year. It is further recommended that the following individuals who applied for the specified posted positions for the 2023-2024 school year be approved at the rate of pay per the Collective Bargaining Agreement, provided the school year allows the sponsors can hold activities as usual. The Activity Club is high school. National Honor Society, Carlin Humphries co-sponsored, $475. National Honor Society Sarah Burns co-sponsored, $475. AATV AM Announcements Club, Steven Rogers sponsored, $470 at a prorated grade. Number 16, the final one. It is recommended to be approved for the following mentor teacher assignments for the 2023-24 school year as approved as per negotiated agreement. Mentor teacher Helen Laseco. New teacher Amanda Fieger. That is all I have.
Thank you. Did I hear a motion to approve one through 16?
Still move.
Still move? Second?
Second.
Discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes?
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzco?
Yes.
Mrs. Keough?
Yes.
Mr. Kovosovic?
Yes.
Mr. Matts?
Yes to everything, but abstain from number 12.
Thank you. Mrs. Remasco?
Yes, for items one through 14 and 16, and I will abstain from 15.
Just give me a second, please. Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Zachi?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Okay, thank you. Financing budget, Mr. Zachi?
For only item, it's recommended to approve contract between Educational Consortium for telecommunications savings and Ambridge Area School District for the school year July 1st, 24 through June 30, 25. It includes application for discounts under the SREK Amendment to the Telecommunications Act of 96, commonly called the E-rate for that school year. Motion to accept.
Second?
A second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes?
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzco?
Yes.
Mrs. Keough?
Yes.
Mr. Kovosovic?
Yes.
Mr. Matts?
Yes.
Mrs. Remasco?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Zachi?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to committee non-voting agenda items. Education and technology, Mrs. Remasco, please.
I have one thing besides number one I just wanted to mention. Dr. Pasquarella, well, I don't know how many people have been to the basketball games, but the pep band has been there, and I just wanted to make note of that, Dr. Pasquarella. That is awesome to throw back up and running at the games. It's been wonderful to have them there. I don't know what category that fits under, but.
Yeah, I actually went and saw him too, meaning Mr. Rogers. And I just thought it was awesome. It pumps you up even on the timeouts and everything.
Agreed.
They're doing a great job.
And I think even many people like in the stands.
Have said it.
Oh, a lot, a lot of the games.
It's like being at a pro game.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
It has been fun to have him back.
It has been.
Yeah, I really enjoyed it. So yeah, I'm glad you brought it up.
Okay, I'll do my number now. Sorry. Number one, 2024 to 2025 proposed school calendar. It is recommended that the proposed 2024 to 2025 school year calendar be approved as presented. Dr. Pasquarella, can I ask you to just, for the public's purposes?
So when we met last time, it was tabled, so that's one thing for the solicitor. I don't know if we untabled it or put it back on. If you might recall, when it was tabled, the Board of Education asked for some additional information, in particular around VOTEC calendar. That meeting is tomorrow, so I don't have any additional information. When I get that information, I will provide that as much as I can to the board. And then the hope would be that we will be able, you all will be able to come to terms with a calendar that you could pass.
Thank you.
And I can help with the wording for next week to formally take it up from the table as a matter of Robert's.
Thank you.
Yep.
The only thing I would like to add to that is after our last meeting, I did go home and pulled the CTC calendar and compared it against the Ambridge one. There were only five days in the entire year that the CTC was in session that Ambridge was not. It was one day in October, one day in November during the Thanksgiving break, one day in February, a day in April, and a day in May. When you looked at when we did pre-NOCDI and NOCDI testing, there was only one day in that time period before those tests that we were not in session. So I had a discussion with the director about that. It really didn't seem like it impacted the testing. So I don't think it was a significant amount of days.
Mrs. Keough, did you find, or did you happen to ask her if there, you know, other district schedules? I mean, would, you know, would they have similar maybe days that probably most likely days?
Yes, we had two school districts that did not start last year until after Labor Day, and we started at the end of August at the CTC. But there were other days throughout the year.
Yeah.
Now, did those kids start at the CTC when you guys started? Or did they have to wait until their district?
Some did come and some did not.
Okay, so they can come?
They can.
Okay.
They can.
The question that was presented to us last month was resolved was not providing busing for the individuals to make it to the CTC. Didn't say that they couldn't provide their own transportation to get them there the days that they were open. With us being closed, we don't provide transportation on those days. Same thing happens with busing being provided to Catholic schools. So if we have a snow day and we cancel busing here, it cancels it for, let's say, St. James and Suickly. So if there's students here, they don't get transportation there because Ambridge is closed. They live in Ambridge School District. But if Ambridge is open and St. James is closed, busing's available, but that's based on Quaker Valley being closed at that time versus Ambridge. So same situation for CTC. It's available to take the student if they can get there. Unfortunately, it's much farther than being in Ambridge, but it comes down to busing availability. And I think she said that if her son wasn't going to be of age at that time, which is also why it was a concern for her to align more to the CTC as well as her being a part of that organization's board and discussing and saying, "We miss more days," doesn't necessarily seem to be as forthright as what was being presented.
So are those two days, and I don't know who would be the one to ask this question to. There were five days, so I'm assuming one November was a Thanksgiving break. April was probably an Easter break. I think it was later Easter last year, I'm just assuming. May is probably the Kennywood Day or around Kennywood Day somewhere. October and February sound like those are the professional development days that aren't on the same day as the end service. Yeah, the Columbus.
Columbus Day.
So instead of us, Dr. Pasquarella, I could be, I could be wrong, but instead of us having professional development on Columbus Day, we have it closer to the end of the nine weeks.
Okay.
Or around the nine weeks. Is that right?
That's right.
Okay, same thing would be for February, right? With President's Day and the end of the third nine weeks?
That one, I've got to think about for a moment. You're asking me when the other professional development day is?
Mm-hmm.
There's one in January, but it's only a half because they get half of the day of the clerical, which was a point you have to remember. Everybody's contract's a little bit different as far as their teachers, so some things just, you can't just mess up, you know?
Right.
I know we had that discussion, but you made me think of that. And then I think that, I don't have it in front of me, but I think the next, I think there is one more in Mar- There is one more in the day, in March. You're asking me which day it is?
I'm just trying to put, I'm just trying to line up these five days.
What day is it? Okay, thank you. I don't think I have the old one. Very sure it's March. For this year that we're in?
Last year.
You know, like some of our days have to be where they are. The clerical at the end of the, of the end of the year has to be there. It's just the contract.
No, I'm just trying to figure that out. So October, is there any way to have the professional development day on Columbus Day?
I'll make a-
Or is there a reason why we don't? I'm just asking, is there a reason why we don't do that? I believe it's because the October one is at the end of the nine weeks. And we prefer that? Well, it's because we-
Well, we put it up against the two-hour delay that goes with it, right? And that was kind of the idea. You have to give them the two-hour delay day if you want to pick up an additional day.
Right, okay.
So, yeah, I mean, I guess you could have a two-hour delay and you could have it on Columbus Day, the PD day.
So March 21st is the end of our third nine weeks.
Say it again, please, I'm sorry.
March 21st is the end of our third nine weeks, and then we back it to that half, that two-hour delay, the 27th.
So what we tried to do, and I think that's what we're talking about, that was a suggestion that came out before. These two-hour delay days on the first and third quarter, if you do those and you give a two-hour delay day to do grades per the contract, you pick an extra day up for professional development. If you don't do that, you don't. What was suggested, as I recall now, to the best of my memory, the other years, was to try to match those up a little closer with the day off and then a two-hour delay or two-hour delay and the day off. You can't move the two-hour delays too much because they have to be at the end of the nine weeks because that's when the grade is. You could move the October day and not have them together probably, and that's, we'll look at the days, that is one option. I'm hearing what you're saying.
I'm just throwing it off. I don't know that it's the right or wrong thing to do, but just.
Right. I know that at a time, that used to be like, for example, when I was here last time as the assistant, that was a big thing because they had the countywide day that day. But a lot of, a lot of that's gone to the wayside just because of travel and, you know, everything else. It just has. And people showing then, when you add these big days planned, and to be honest with you, I think it had a lot less to do with that and a lot more that contracts only have so many days, and the amount of state mandates that you have don't allow you as well as you would like to to send somebody to go see what they're doing here and doing there. So you combine having less days that you could use for professional development in a contract due to cost with the fact that state mandates are, we can barely fit them in. There's just not time to organize that to make it meaningful to have a countywide thing where you move people from one way or another.
Right.
So I don't think we were the only, I don't want to be quoted on this, but I don't think we're the only one that moved away from having the Columbus Day. But I'll make a note of Columbus Day. You could do that as well, or look into it.
We did look at that too, and Dr. Pasquarella, you are correct. We are not the only district that moved away from not having Columbus Day off. Actually, when we sat down and really looked at, and that's for this current year, the calendar that we are looking at, there was no school district's calendar that lined up exactly with the CTC one. The reason why I went and pulled the dates was there was concern about NOCDI testing, which is where the certifications come out of the programs. So pre-NOCDI testing occurs before the Christmas break, so it would be in the fall. So there was only one day in that timeframe that the students would have missed prior to pre-NOCDI testing, and then one day actually before we test in the spring. So it really didn't impact, I don't see it as impacting testing. I mean, as far, it's like, you know, students not having the opportunity to receive instruction prior to testing. And that testing's in two parts too. It is, there is a computer part to it where they do like an online test, and then there is, you know, the hands-on because of their courses.
And they still had the correct amount of hours, they needed?
Yeah, the only one it affects as far as hours go would be cosmetology because for their state license, it has to be X amount of hours. But they do have the opportunity to come in, like if we would be off and we would be in session over there, that they could come in and make that time up. So there is a little bit more hours built in there so that it's not like exactly that same amount of hours.
Right, that's what I figured.
Right.
Mrs. Remasco? Are you okay?
Do you have, I am, do you? I think that's a good question.
So just off the top of my head, Mrs. Keough, I don't, I don't know if this is possible, but would there be an option for those students that are off, maybe that they could zoom in for that day? Would that be a possibility at the CTC? If, you know, so, if they so choose or don't want to miss that day but don't have transportation?
Um, I would probably say probably yes in some courses. When you get into like the trades, carpentry and masonry.
Yeah.
And electrical and HVAC, I think that becomes a little bit problematic.
I just wondered if like, just for sake of them hearing instruction and not missing. Just, just the thought.
Okay, financing budget, Mr. Zachi?
School district monthly bills and salaries. It's recommended that the monthly school district bills in the amount listed and the monthly school district personnel salaries in the amount listed be paid. Cafeteria bills is recommended that the monthly cafeteria bills and the monthly cafeteria personal salaries in these amounts be paid. Number three is recommended to accept the 2223 final auditor's report. And number four, it is recommended to accept the funds from Beaver Valley Intermediate Unit for the MWEE Classroom Capstone Project. Funds are to be used to support learning, cover field trip. Funds are to be used to support learning, cover field trip costs and/or to purchase supplies for individual teachers' classrooms based on the W, MWEE training. The funds total $1,440. Pam Weggins Green and Debbie Staving will receive $720 each for a classroom project. Any discussion on one through four?
All right, buildings and grounds, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zachi. Mr. Metz, buildings and grounds, please.
It is recommended to accept the bid proposal from Cameron Taylor to replace the hot cold well at the Ambridge Area High School at a total of eighteen thousand six oh three, uh, three through the state bidding process.
Thank you. I see a notation here for a discussion point about the middle school roof. Dr. Pascarella, is that something you'd like to comment on?
So as many of you know, we, we did have a portion that was damaged. And that job has been completed. And that is over basically the auditorium roof at the middle school. They had asked me to, and also when we put that out for bid, we asked for what it would cost to do the job in its entirety. Just give me one second, please, so that I can pull up. My notes. Okay. So when we were up there, one, checking off that job, they showed me many areas of the roof in sections that were very deficient, that were either on the verge of leaking or, or had rips and tears. It also showed the area where the insulation or membrane you could feel was significantly moist and collecting water. They also talked a little bit on that section of the roof about how the masonry work around there would either need to be redone or we would need to put some type of metal sealant around it. Because if we don't do that, then the water that would be on there will start to leak down from, in, and ruin the masonry work and create leaks that way. One question I had is based upon the bid that they had given us, which was roughly $3 million to complete the project, how much would it be to split this into sections from most needed to, to maybe secondary? They're both needed to be done, but what is most, you know, pressing? So when we looked at that, they, they, they said they would be able to hold, and this would be definitely a question for the solicitor to make sure that that's accurate, but they would be able to split this in half. And there was one change order for that metal, either the, the metal that would go around the mason work or to have the, the masonry work be done. They split it into two and then also created an add-on section. It's my belief from being up there that the add-on section should be done, in my opinion, in the first tier or the first phase. So i- if you did that, it, it's roughly $327,900 for the add-on. Plus you would have somewhere. So if you take the add-on of 327,900 and they had about 1.3, 1 point, 1,304,500 for that section, plus the 300,000. Plus you'd probably look, you'd have to get a change order for somewhere in the ballpark. He was thinking about 100,000 either for the masonry work or to seal in this area with the metal. So if you add all those up, you know, you're, you're at 1.3 plus 300 is 1.6. You're at about 1.7, 1.8 to do it. The reason why I'm bringing it up now and putting it on your radar is they put a tentative order in on materials because they do that for all of their customers to try to hold that. Should we not be willing to move forward with that, probably at this month's meeting, to be honest with you, because they have to have the orders officially put in and down payment in by March, then it's no pressure, but it may cause an increase in the cost. Because this is last year's pricing that they're holding. And the new pricing for materials in their estimation will go up. I'm not trying to rush you into any decision that you may want to make or not make, but I felt that it was prudent to give you that information so that you understood that. Personally, I'll just end on this and then try to take questions. Thinking about it all and visiting it up there on there on my own. I think at least the phase one, not to say phase two may or may not have an issue, but, but phase one for sure, along with that add-on, would be my recommendation to complete that work.
And that's the 1.7?
Yeah. That, that's a rough estimate. It could be a little bit more because I don't have the exact quote on the metal around there. But that's 1.8, you're, you're in around there. The other remaining part would still be another 1.4 for the remaining part. That wouldn't be done. A fair question that I ask, because I figured this is what I would ask if I were you, is if we don't do it all in one chunk, what, what then would that cost us in addition? And I, I think the amount that we were talking around was about another 80,000. That is figured in for two setups, which is about 30-some thousand. But that, the other remaining of that, the 40 or 35, 40,000, using rough estimates, because that's what he's doing, is for increase in the cost of inflation on what the materials are going to go up. So that's the information that I could provide to you at this, this given time. If we want to do this and hold that pricing, I think it would be something that we need to double check with the solicitor. But I think we are, he felt that we were able to do this in his experience, but that would be something that I wanted to make sure that you felt good about splitting the job. Change orders do happen, I tell you that about every job that we get into, so I'm not super surprised by that. But I do think if we don't do it from being up there on my own, we are going to run into having to do it anyway. We're going to pay more and we're probably going to pay for repairs because the water's going to start leaking in, at least in that section. I can't guarantee, obviously no one could, that it won't in the other section. But in that phase and the add-on, there's patches everywhere. So I open it up to the floor. I could try to answer the best I can from being up there with the folks.
Doc, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, you said down payment for materials. What's 10%, 30%?
Uh, I don't know if that's specific enough in the, in the contract. Let's see if it's, it, because right now this is kind of like more of a proposal than the contract. It seemed to me.
If you don't, that's not the deal.
Well, it, it seemed to me like what we did before was installments when we did the other one. You know, they wanted X amount. It was a little more than that because they're ordering the materials, to be honest.
So it leads into my second question of giving a down payment for the materials. When is the work actually done? And can we roll that extra work into a budget in July?
I think that you are probably looking at a summer project. We, that would be another advantage of getting it done now. Obviously, I can't guarantee that. What they had to do is work a lot of second shift, you know, to get this job done. Obviously, second shift, when they did that, which was mandated towards the end of fall, early winter, second shift is a lot shorter or harder to do because you don't have as much daylight. But I think their goal would be to try to get it in the summer if they can and do it during the day. But I would just say that yes, we could try to roll it into the budget for that. Or, you know, we would be looking at some things for repairs in the money that we've tried to save. Either way, I would ask them that. I guess my point would be if they say they could wait till July and start in July and do it, then we could budget for that accordingly and that would make sense. If they say, no, we need to start sooner, if you want us to be able to get this done so we don't have any delay, then we may want to think about using, using the funds that way.
Third question, sorry, John. I don't know what section of roof this, this is. What, is that, we were told at some point about trees damaging the roof. Is that this section of the roof where we would also want to take care of the trees?
The, the trees are in the second phase.
Okay.
To answer that question. And so, if we want, I think that's a discuss, if you do the whole thing, then I would suggest that we, we look into taking care of the trees. If you are going to do, which would I would recommend at this point to have, then I think we could look at maybe trying to service the trees possibly to try to extend the life of that. But I would agree, if, if you're gonna, if you're going to go phase two at one point or another, then you want to make sure that's done before you put a new one on. That, that would make some sense. Whatever that looks like, you know, trimming it, you know, getting them out of there would be difficult. But that's my answer to that. So that is phase two. Not that you have to have a phase two, but that's how it's broken up.
Sorry, I, I just have two questions. This isn't a result of damage that falls under a warranty under insurance policy, correct?
No. The roofs, just so you're clear, if I can answer that just for everyone. The roofs are out of warranty at this given point by a few, by at least a couple of years. And it wasn't a result of wind damage. That was a result on the auditorium roof and we didn't get a claim for that.
Okay. And then the second is, is there potential for grant money through the county as a result of the damage?
As a result of the, the need? So just recently, I've seen some things about grants, so I've asked Michelle to start to look into that. I would look at that if I were, were us as a, a bonus opportunity. I don't, it'll be difficult to get.
Regardless, but if we can find-
If we could get it, we, we, we get it. I, so she is looking into that. And, and whether that be for phase one or phase two or what, what we're going to be able to get. My main thing is, is if you're having some form of matching grant and we're only in the initial stages, because this just came out of her even exploring it. But if so, if it's a matching grant, even if it's 20 or 50%, if you were going to spend it anyway, it would be beneficial to us, you know? Just to be honest, I think that's well stated. If we're going to do it anyway, let's try. If we are eligible to write it, we write it. But, you know, they are difficult sometimes to get.
It's nice when you actually have a project that you can move forward on to, to go hook for those monies versus saying, we'd like to do this.
Right.
If we can get the money. So it could be beneficial to us.
Is there a second part?
That was the second part.
Any other questions? Dr. Pascarella, you, you said you were, you were up there and looked at it yourself. And I realize you're not a roofing expert, but was it your opinion that there is already wa- Is, do you know if it's rubber or vinyl?
The part that we-
The phase one portion?
It, it appears to me to be. You mean the material that's currently down?
That's currently down.
It's a rubber.
Black?
It's rubber.
Yeah, it's black, rubber. Was it your opinion that there is water already? I'm sorry? Was it your opinion that there's already water underneath there?
There is. And I, I had, you know, our maintenance guy who's at the middle school, Ed, you know, Ed Norlag up there with me too. He has some experience in a lot of different things, so he came up there with me too. But I, I would just say even for me, who's not an expert, there is no, absolutely no doubt in the phase one portion that there's a lot of water in there. You could feel it as opposed to walking, like around the other areas. Like not even close. That's my opinion.
So historically, just for some context, I've been down this road with, you know, our business enterprises. And once that water, and many of you already know this, once that, once that water's underneath, there's, it's not going to dry out. You know, even if it's a dry summer, it's, it's not going to dry out. It's just going to continue to damage the infrastructure of the building. So, okay.
One, one other point I did want to make, and this, I'm not, not the expert, but it was something in talking with a lot of folks who are. And I want to make sure, Michelle, that, and you could double check this, that the bids that were given do increase the slope. We talked a lot about going up there, remember, and seeing how the increase on slope would make a difference. You could clearly see on what's redone, the slope way better. And I think that, I think it may include that. If not, I think we should get them the price if it does not. Because from what I could see on the drainage and talking to some of the guys from Triangle, because it wasn't just, there was the Garland, there was the Triangle boss, but there was also a lot of, a few supervisors or, or hands-on guys that were there as well. And they all were like, look at that pitch, you know? And I think if you're going to do it and we're going to make it last, I think you should do it right. That would be my opinion. And get the slope, which is going to cost, you know, a little more, especially probably in phase two because that's a little less built up. But here nor there, I felt like I should mention that because that was something I did want. That was one of the major reasons why I got up there. I wanted to see the slope. And I used, you know, I think it made a difference. So just double check that for me.
I have a couple of questions. The 80,000 that you were talking about, that's if we do this in two separate phases? The additional 80,000? Is that what you were referring to?
I believe it was roughly 80,000. Let me read this.
I don't need the exact.
Well, I'll read it because I think it's important. At the bottom of phase two, you will find a note stating that the additional cost to award phase two for 2025 construction is 81,400. So that's his estimate. He didn't want to be quoted on that. And what he was telling me, that I understood, it was there's two setup costs. That's step one. The other part of the 80,000 is the increase in pricing even to this year, let alone another year.
So that's if we choose to do this in two separate sections?
Correct.
Okay. And then how many years did he estimate would be remaining on the phase two part of the roof? Before that?
Well, I understand your question. He's not gonna, he's not gonna answer that. He's gonna say it's out of warranty. His recommendation would be to do it. My walk is that, I'll just say this, they probably both need done, but I could clearly tell you that phase one, in my opinion, is worse, is a now thing. The other one, I mean, I could, we could be sitting here a year from now and you're like, wow, phase two's leaking. You know, I'm, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that. I might as well say it into the camera that it's, it might leak then too. But I am relatively confident that phase one will leak.
Right.
Fast.
I wonder if it's already water on the roof there, right? But he agrees with you in your assessment that phase one is a higher priority than phase two?
He does agree with that. He just would say.
Fail at any time.
Yep.
And we have to be proactive and not reactive when it damages the, the actual building? And then is there a warranty? Tell us my last question.
Yeah, we, we've put it in there and it's a 30-year labor, you know, so the other ones were like 20, but the one we just put on the, so it would be 30. Answer your question. It's what it says in his proposal.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Go ahead.
My only question is, is this something that you, I mean, we, we will need to add it if you want us to add it.
My opinion is we need to be proactive and at least do phase one.
When you say add it, you mean add it to next week's agenda?
I do, yep. Because otherwise, if you, if he doesn't place the, if we give a motion, then he'll be good to be able to order the material. I'll be able to say it went through. If we don't and it goes into March, then it will increase the price. He can't hold it past March. Because I asked that specifically, can I have till March? He's like, no, I said, I have to have the order in, in Mar- March first. Yeah, so then I can't. I tried that, but it didn't work.
Can I talk about it again next week? And right now, this is subject to solicitor Ruby because I just want to make sure that the way that was advertised-
Right, all that, all that. And he feels confident, but I explained to him that, but I wasn't, if, if, if no one was in favor and wasn't,
It did not, right.
Pay to have you look at it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Add?
Aye.
Any? No? All right, add it.
Thank you.
You got it. Anything else you could?
On that one, I am.
Mrs. Fisher, nothing to report on that?
Nothing to report, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Ms. Fitzgoe, public relations?
I actually have two things, two little points of information. One, the high school kids have been working really hard on their musical, The Drowsy Chaperone. It's going to be February 29th, March 1st, 2nd and 3rd. The tickets are on sale now and I do believe they're joining us next week for a little preview. The second is this coming weekend, our youth- The second is this coming weekend, our youth bridger wrestlers are going to their Wawa tournament, so I just wanted to wish them good luck. And good luck to our only bridger girl who is going to the first all-girls Wawa championship. So good luck to her. It's my daughter.
Very cool. Thank you. Mrs. Keighley, Australian Rules?
I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Ms. Fitzgill, Legislation?
I have nothing this evening.
Mr. Kovacevic, Labor Relations?
Nothing additional.
All right, thank you. Personnel, Ms. Young?
Number one, Ambridge Area Education Memorandum of Understanding. It is recommended to approve the MOU between the Ambridge Area School District and the Ambridge Area Education Association to establish an agreement concerning elementary, elementary scheduling. Two, MOU, it is recommended to the memorandum of understanding between the Ambridge Area School District and the Ambridge Area Education Support Professional Association, ESPA slash PSEA dash NEA, regarding a four-day work week for the summer of 2024 be approved as presented. Number three, memorandum of understanding, it is recommended the MOU between the Ambridge Area School District and the local 248 Ambridge Area School Employees, AFS CME dash AFL dash CIO, regarding a four-day work week for the summer of 2024 be approved as presented. Number four, Slippery Rock University is, it is recommended to approve Molly Wolf and Donna Green. Slippery Rock University Block One student teachers at Economy Elementary for the spring semester, pending receipt of current clearances, satisfactory drug screening, TB testing, air responses by current slash former employers to Act 168 screening. Both teachers will be placed with Kelly Bisjack. That is all for personnel.
All right, thank you. Any additional discussion or questions on those? Okay, thank you. I just have a couple of things. You know, when, when I started two years ago on this board, the financial hill that I felt like was in front of us was steep. It was ugly. It did not look like it was going to be easily turned around, and it hasn't been. There have been many sacrifices over the past two years on any number of levels, but there's been a lot of prudence. There's been a lot of hard work, and all of a sudden, after all that, things appear to start to be stabilizing. And for any of you that may know me, I apologize in that you've heard it before. The first step to winning is to stop losing. And I believe that we are starting to stop losing. We have a long way to go, so everybody's patience is appreciated. But if you come to these meetings regularly, or you watch them on the screen regularly, you hear the kids come, you hear what they're doing, you hear what they're achieving. It's, it's awesome. And now you see some of the financial situation where we are today, and we have a long way to go, and there's still a lot of missing pieces of the puzzle. You heard tonight about, you know, Ezra's is going to go away. We don't know what that looks like yet. But we believe that things, I believe, I, I never speak for them. I always speak for me. But I believe that we are starting to improve. I believe that we are starting to stop losing. And I believe that in many cases, we're starting to win. And that's a very promising place to be. And I know Dr. Pascarella and many of us that sit on this board together have talked about the premise of starting to see something on the horizon, starting to see the sun come up, right? And I think we're starting to see that. But we need your continued support. We need your continued patience and understanding that this is not easy. It is serious, but it is getting better. Go to a game, catch a concert. Things are not as bad as many people think. Things are getting better. And I think there's a lot of people up here that feel the same way. And Dr. Pascarella on the financial side, and, and, you know, so we heard about the financial stuff. Then we, we saw some of the wins that we're starting to have, even in some of the most difficult climates, with, with scoring improvements, it's starting to get better. So I appreciate the hard work that you did in putting that together for us tonight. And, and most importantly, I appreciate the stewardship of you and the rest of your team, including teachers, staff, everyone, in helping to manage us through these difficult waters over the past few years. So thank you for that. And with that, the other thing I would add is there was talk about adjourning to an executive session. Our esteemed solicitor has shared with me that there is nothing pressing to the extent that we have to do that tonight, given the length of our meeting today, and that if there is something pressing between now and then, she can get us in the right quarters over the course of the week. So with, with that, take that in advisement when we get to that part. But with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, that'll serve as my solicitor's report as well.
Dr. Pascarella?
Yeah, I think we shared some things. I'll be brief, but I'm looking forward to next week. We're going to recognize a lot of students, so that's an exciting time. And I've enjoyed watching them and looking forward to all the things coming up that you're going to hear about, celebrating the, the good work that our kids did and the things that are going to come up, little showcases of what we're going to be able to see with our musical and those types of things. So it's a really exciting time. I appreciate the kind words and everyone's support and the entire district, parents, students, staff, everyone working hard together to try to do the best that we can. Appreciate you giving me the chance to, to say that publicly for, for all the kids and staff. We're proud. It's a good day to be a bridger.
Thank you. It is. Thank you. With that, on to Old and New Business. It's now time for Old and New Business. Any district resident who desires to comment on any business relevant to the Ambridge Area School District should now come forward. Each person must state their first and last name and address prior to speaking. Each person will be allowed three minutes and can speak only once.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hello, Bridge 2623, Weather Row, Bell Pride and Cliff. I know you're all tired. Sorry. In regards to the audit presentation, is that going to be available online? Not so much the presentation, but the report, will that be available online for the taxpayers to be able to see what was added and what he has in the reports? This is from Astro. Thank you for bringing up about the Orton Gilligan teachers. Just to clarify, when you said that there were, for Pascarella, when you said that there were prime teachers in the elementary, are you talking about all three elementary schools? On the finance budget page five, we have a breakdown of the school district bills, et cetera. What is the breakdown of the number of students in each school, elementary, middle, and high school? And what is the cost per student? Does it differ depending on what grade the school district, or the Russian High School District, that school is in? And in regards to the group, how many bids did you folks get? How many people were sent in bids? And finally, I don't know if you're able to share this, I guess this is more to the solicitor. But the lady from last month, the elderly lady, had that tax issue. I don't know if that was resolved or if you're able to share anything. That's it. Thank you.
I think I caught it all. Thank you. Would you like to address the tax issue first, please?
I'm mulling that over to the extent of what I could, what I can share. What I can share is that if, if the board was to grant the relief requested, we would have to do so through, through an official action, and there was no action contemplated last month. And there's, there's not any that was discussed this evening or anticipated this month or in the future, and that we have communicated with, with the individuals to the best of our ability.
Thank you. Dr. Pascarella?
So as far as just going in order of what you had there, you had posting the audit online. I don't know, Solicitor, if we typically post the entire document online, if not, if that's mandated.
I think that's a matter of local choice, whether you post the whole thing or not.
So that's the question. That's my answer on that. I'm not sure if we typically do. It seems to me that, I don't recall off the top of my head. If we do, we probably would, if we normally do, we probably would continue to do that. And if not, that's up to the board, I guess, if you want the entire document up there. I'm not sure.
It can be viewed, if it's not online, it could be asked to be viewed otherwise?
Yeah, right. Yeah, I mean, you could do like a right to know or whatever.
Yes, that it's a public record, subject to.
So that would be one way if you really wanted to get it. All three elementaries, I, I believe, we talked about how, you know, for Orton Gillian, we talked about how that is elective in nature and a teacher would have to apply. It appears at least at hand that Dr. Filipowski believes we had applicants from all buildings. Keep in mind that over the course of summer and in a bid, somebody could move from one building to another, so I can't guarantee that. But it seems like, you know, that would be a good goal to try to get somebody in each building, if I answered that the best I could. Say it again? No, go ahead, say.
I was just gonna say, can we have teacher members in the building, K to 12, that are trained in reading and writing, which is science-related based as well? So all of our special education teachers are first in that, as well as parent professionals and other teachers. So we have that K to 12, and then everything else, we leave them there for all of them.
Okay, then student enrollment and cost per kid. So I mean, I would have to get the exact enrollment if you, if you're looking for that. I mean, we have about 21 or 2200 students, and then you have about 700, maybe. Do you have the exact numbers in front of you? You can read them.
Yeah, my computer just went in. It's about 740 at the high school. I think it's 480 at the middle school, 320 at Highland, and 290, like Idaho.
298 at State Street, and then three, three some. Anyway, you, you get the general gist. But to answer your question, as far as the state, as far as the state would figure it out per student, as, as far, I don't know what the cost per kid you're looking for. When the state fills out a form for students that choose to go to a charter school, they don't look at it by building. They look at by district. I can answer that. And the rough cost is somewhere in around that 11,000 to 13,000 for a regular ed kid. And the rough cost is somewhere around, you know, mid twenties to mid thirties on the special education cost, which fluctuates every year in a form. I don't know if that completely answered the question. We could get you the, if you do whatever, right to know, or it might even just be available online, the exact enrollment, which is always a little bit subject to change. But I think you get the general gist of what our buildings are made up of. And then how many bids for the roof, we went out, so that you're clear, advertised for a public bid that everyone could submit. They ended up being the only one who did submit the bid, Triangle Roofing through Garland. But we did go out. There was a ton of people at the pre-bid meeting that didn't walk through, but they were the only ones that turned it in. But they didn't know they were the only ones that turned it in. I think that's an important point. That's why you do it, because they had to compete against other people in case. So I still think, you know, it helped us to get the best price out of those folks. But there was quite a few that showed up, but not many that put it in. I think I answered all your questions to the best of my ability.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? No? All right. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
A second.
Second. You can adjourn. Happy Valentine's Day, everyone.